All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting in order. Please turn all cell phones, electric devices off or vibrate at this time. And Councilman Winters, would you please lead us in prayer and question. And Councilman Winters, would you please lead us in prayer and question.
Lord our Father, we give you thanks for all that you do for each of us. We ask that you can deal with the sick, deal with our troops overseas. And we give you thanks for giving us the opportunity to serve the city, not you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Let's be pleased. In the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in thy name. For it is with the same faith as we are all.
Thank you, sir. All right, this is approved of the minutes on November sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
I make a motion we approve the minutes on November sixteenth, even the directions as noted.
And second. Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Visitors who are not in regular duty will be given an opportunity to address the council on any subject at this time. Nobody here. Are you going to need a visitor seat?
I don't think so.
All right, we move from the table, discuss and consider the interlocal agreement with Ronalds County for maintenance of city streets and other services.
Barry was invited to go to be here. I went to his office on Friday and personally invited him to come and discuss this particular agenda item. At about four thirty this afternoon, I received a text message from Judge Gilliard saying he had to beat a truck of hay. So, he is not going to be here. This is the same thing we had discussed last time and nothing has changed. My opinion or my advice to council would be to vote to reject the interlocal agreement with Ronalds County. Because it's basically the one-way agreement. They're telling us what they're going to do and we don't have anything in time. We can reject it and then if they want to sit down and have a discussion about what we want to charge them for services, then we can do that. They certainly don't need our permission to charge us for services. They can do that as they want. They've made those intentions clear in that interlocal. But my advice would be to reject this interlocal agreement with Ronalds County. And then begin a dialogue with them to see, are you, you know, are you going to intend to do this? And if so, this is our schedule and we can develop our own fee schedule there.
Because basically, you're talking mainly on the firefighting or votes?
I'm talking about the streets.
Just talking about the streets.
Yeah, just three different ones. Yeah, just the street part.
There's streets. That's the first one.
If we accept it, we wouldn't accept it. If we accept it or we reject it, either way, they're going to assess the fee.
May I notify the winners if they have fees listed in there?
Yes.
But they didn't have before?
Correct.
And does that limit us if they do accept the interlocal agreement, does that limit us from charging them for everything that we did?
I don't think so. I can be with them if we need to implement that. Or in the past, we haven't been charged by them, I can't be with them if we make something that they decharge.
So, so what you're, what you're asking is time to negotiate that. So, if they move, pass that interlocal agreement, we'll just, we need to have a meeting and say, if we're going to pass some interlocal agreement, then we're going to start charging for our services.
Typically, interlocal agreement is just that. It's when we did the dogs with Miles and Brunt. They bring us dogs, we put the dogs down, the fee is this, and everything is settled. This interlocal agreement with the county, basically just codifies us asking them for services. Well, we haven't asked them for services in three years. If we decide that we need their services in May, because it's street paving, May or June or July, we know what schedule's going to be. What the unknown is, is what are we going to charge them for the zipper, for the loader? What, what, where are we going to charge them in return?
But that's not related to the interlocal agreement.
See, it's not really, I don't think it should be an interlocal agreement. It should be just a memory, I don't understand, that we're going to charge you X from here on out.
So, if we signed this in the past?
No.
We have without the fees, have we not?
No.
Have we had? Okay, my fault, I'm wrong.
Well, we've had the fire department, we've done it.
We did, yeah, yeah, and that's all that's settled.
Oh, it's all that's settled.
Yeah, yeah. This is street paving. This is, for the first time, they want to charge us femur rates, which is how they came up with the fee schedule. They want to charge us femur rates for services they typically have provided in the past. I think we'd compensate them with hamburgers, fed the road crew.
Yeah, well, in the past, we've always just borrowed from one another. You know, if they need something, they borrow it, we need something, we borrow it. But then they decide that they're going to have to charge them.
So, who borrows more, us or them?
They.
Do they realize that? Probably not.
Well, I don't know.
Make a motion we reject the interlocal agreement with Ronalds County for maintenance of city streets and other services.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You know, easy. And everything's been going up every year. We've been taking hits on every single thing, so there's no point in it.
All right, discuss and take action to approve the interlocal agreement with Ronalds County for rural fire protection services.
The next two agenda items are rural fire and dispatching. So, I'll, I'll give you that caveat on this, on these two items. Brent looked at that. What I wanted to know was, how many fires are we fighting in Ronalds County? How many fires do we fight in town? And it's about a fifty-fifty split. We, we've turned it to about fifty percent of our resources and assets in Ronalds County and about fifty percent inside the city limits of Ballenger. To the point Philip just made, you can argue a number of city of Ballenger resources, i.e. money, personnel, equipment, are going and fighting fires in Ronalds County. And that we are the de facto Ronalds County Fire Department. We're funding, we're funding a fire department that fights fires up there. It becomes, the other question on this side is, if there was a fire at the old gas plant about two or three weeks ago, it's in the county. Do we just let it sit there and burn or do we send the Ballenger Fire Department out there? There's the end of flip side of the argument. I wanted the county to know that we're spending, we, city of Ballenger spends about a hundred, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on average for the budget for the fire department, seventy-five thousand dollars when we go to, into Ronalds County.
And they want to give us?
And they're giving us ten thousand.
Got it.
Is that the same for the last year though?
Yes.
Well, we're top cutting down, didn't we?
Yeah, they upped it one year, didn't they?
They upped it one to twenty, twenty-one, and then last year they dropped it to ten and now it's still at ten. I said a hundred and twenty-five thousand, sorry, I meant a hundred and twenty-five thousand is the total fire department budget.
Well, now, Miles and Winters have the phones, they have the phones up there.
Yes.
What's the fee from the county?
Ten thousand.
They're rating it ten thousand.
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Except for when they drop down to like five.
Yeah, when they're.
Is there any other, does Cruz have one? Does, um, Wayne Yeate have anything out there?
Not that I know of, just Miles, Rowan, and everyone else.
It certainly sounds like we need to give it to the other cities and kind of negotiate that, because if we're going out, that means they're going out too.
And there are times that they do call each other for backup.
Yeah.
Well, there was a time at the country club where we became the, and when Ballenger's big to put their rest on out.
They have mutual aid agreements. And, and I, I can't see a fire department not responding to a mutual aid because of the cost of it.
They're going to.
But that's a perfect example of the fire, the fire at the golf course and our guys are out there and, and I don't, as a city manager, I don't have a problem with that, I don't want to put a number to it. But I think the county know, your ten thousand dollars is great, you're not even scratching the surface. And probably Miles and Winters is in the same boat. But I would recommend that we take, whether we approve the interlocal agreement for the fire department. I just, I wanted to be on the record that we probably, we spent half of our time in Ronalds County.
Well, before next year, we didn't get the other cities to kind of negotiate this, you know, position of strength just ahead. You know, you give us a total of thirty-five thousand dollars, but basically one hundred for this. To all of us, and, and between all of us, we spend three hundred thousand dollars.
To a broader point, I think it's worth having conversations, or at least on a quarterly basis, informally meeting with Winters and Miles about a number of issues. But that's all other.
If it was the last day, Brent could document, get in, how much time it takes for out of county for doing the fire.
He will try to pull some of that, because they do do it.
I mean, I'm not saying a little in-town fire is not going to take as long, but sometimes with the rice fire.
It all depends on some of the house fires.
Yeah.
They've been on the house fire sometimes three days, depending on size.
How far back do you want it to go?
I just look back to fucking last year.
Year to two years?
I'll say two years.
Two years, so we have some data. Okay. Three, four?
Four.
Three to four.
Three or four?
We got a drought, dry season was like three years ago.
Oh, when we had all that mixup?
Yeah.
And that one had fire, wildcat, and everything else was going, they were going everywhere.
That, that's one of your biggest things.
Yeah, that was a big year too, when it flooded, but.
I understand.
No, you put it there. Good. Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement with Ronalds County for rural fire protection.
Second.
I say.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, discuss and take action to approve the interlocal agreement with Ronalds County for dispatching services.
Do you want to extend this cop scene crossover with dispatches? I'm confused about how long it's going to be. Is there any relationship?
No.
Is there not?
Bill, Barry hates technology, so therefore they, it won't get upgraded. Now, you have a new sheriff coming in, I can see we've got to see integrating with dispatch out there.
Would that reduce, that would reduce calls because cop scene takes up some of that?
Um, it will help document it all better and help, you know, maybe bring the cost down, I think. So. They will, they won't, they won't reduce any calls, but, you know, it'll help document better, you know, stuff like that. Then DPS and, you know, they, cop scene dispatch, basically it's big old sixty-inch screen TV with the map from county on it. And each cop scene unit has DPS.
Just know where everybody is.
Yeah, dispatch knows where everybody is, what they're doing, stuff like that.
I think Philip's question was, you looking at it.
I have.
Integrating with it to reduce the cost.
Yes, that's a good idea. I mean, I don't know if it will reduce our costs any. Now, if Ronalds County Sheriff's Office at the cop scene.
Right.
And then we can, they can probably pick up the cost and we just reimburse them, you know, through the interlocal agreement.
Okay.
So, maybe, I don't know.
Do we have any other total cost of dispatches?
Total budget of the dispatch?
The damage for us.
So, there's, oh, I want to know what percentage of, of the total we are, I'm just curious.
Oh, I got you.
Yeah.
Well, we're the largest park, but they say we use it the most.
We do.
It stays inside.
Think that, any other cities use Ronalds County dispatches?
Miles, Warren, all the fire departments. Any that's approved?
I'm just curious. The number of dispatches, time-consuming, it requires a lot of human capital.
Well, we ran around with them. Ten years ago, did we do that? The way you were here, we did it.
Six years or?
Yeah, when we decided to go with the rock, the carrot. To save money, and I think we, I was just curious, you know. I mean, because I want to say, I want to pay the same percentage that we pay for firefighting, that's what I'd like to pay for dispatching.
If you looked at calls, I think we're probably the biggest user of that.
Well, it has to be population-based, right? Yeah.
They call in because we don't have a dispatch or our police department, that is it.
No, no way there's dispatch. Winter doesn't have their own dispatch, Miles has a, that is the only dispatch center in the county.
Yeah, it's an underwriting PD head.
Were you doing this study?
Yeah, I did a study two years ago, three years ago. We took, I think seventy percent of calls that came into dispatch. So, that was just Ballenger PD alone. So, now that, you know, whether we assisted on it or anything like that, if we're involved, it's, that was seventy percent. Whether we medical fire, you know, helping winters, DPS, or.
So, it's not necessarily one of us that were to need it, but we took it.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm just curious.
I like the city, if you ask me.
It's in the office.
Okay, just whenever it's a big deal.
Well, I think the, uh, the church department, yeah, church department is kind of like the county precinct, you know, the commission. They tend to forget that the citizens of Ballenger are also citizens of the county.
Yeah, all, all the citizens of Ronalds County are citizens of one of the cities or the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, still.
They remember when selection's on.
Yeah.
All right, I have a motion to take action to approve the interlocal agreement with Ronalds County Dispatching Service.
I make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with Ronalds County for dispatching service.
That was second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, discuss and take action to consider taking hits on the condemned property located at three oh six Strong Avenue.
We had a gentleman come in, wanted to purchase property at three oh six Strong. In fact, I think he offered to make a purchase right then and there. And he was not happy with the statute, says we have to go out and put this up for bid. So, I don't know that he stormed out, I don't know if he's interested in buying the property or not, but we own it. If y'all want to put it up for bid and see what we can get for it, we can. What is it? We had a, we had a person who wants to buy, I don't think you wanted to compete with people for it, but.
What is it? Is it a house?
Yeah, it's, it's got a little rundown house on it. You remember two, three meetings ago, this fellow come in and wanted to move a building that sits on the backside of the property?
Is that property?
It's same property.
So, he came and talked that off?
Well, that's still there, that's a memory.
No, so certainly, yeah, somebody wants to buy the condemned property.
I don't think we ever condemned it. We, I think there's some tax deal, the city wind up. But I don't remember who ever, I don't think we condemned it.
She thought it was.
It may be, yeah. It'll never been condemned for a long time. But it's not an issue.
So, if it's just for taxes and you put one bid with the tax office, then?
We would, we could put it up for bid, the city is the lead.
Well, no, 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 we, it's city property. It was a tax. You know.
We acquired it through.
We, we acquired it through taxes.
Who was the owner of the property?
He didn't say.
He didn't say.
They bought the house on the corner and they were wanting to fix the house on the corner and this house.
So, he was, had to sell that, some kind of option.
Well, you have to, you have to bid. You have to bid.
Yeah, I have to mend. Yeah.
Well, the state, the statute requires it, so he, he can put up a bid and then he can put his offer in for whatever he wanted to sell it for. And if somebody else decides they want to put in a dollar more than, and our only obligation is the most responsible bid. That, that's how they're showing the highest bid and showing the lowest bid, that's the most responsible.
Which could be the next door, never, we would take care of it.
Well, we're going to have, you know, if, if y'all don't want to shut it, we're going to have to have it allowed now, yes. I think this fellow was talking about remodeling that house?
Yes. I just think that's a good idea. I make a motion that we put the property at three oh six Strong Avenue and start taking bids.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, discuss and take action to approve two thousand and sixteen holiday schedule. And you should have had a piece of paper documenting that given to you.
These are the bank holidays. We stay open on a bank holiday and nobody showed up, nobody came by, nobody stopped. Then we close on a bank holiday, nobody knows who we closed. This is the schedule that I typically have done in cities where I've been in the past. It's not quite as generous as the state of Texas, but I don't feel that rough either. But it is a few more holidays than we've had in the past. Stay open on bank holidays, because if you, the bank's closed, the post office is closed. The county nine times out of ten is closed.
I make a motion we approve the two thousand and sixteen holiday schedule.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. All right, discuss and consider, we're two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen Board of Directors for Ronalds County Dispatching. We should have had that list.
Well, we kind of made a motion before for Al and Donna, didn't we? I actually put our votes for Al and Donna.
This is, if you remember, we have three hundred and thirty-eight votes and I think the state district has like twenty-five hundred votes.
It's in there, it's in the package. We have three hundred and thirty-eight, and they score thirteen hundred and twenty-seven.
Yeah.
County, they have eighteen hundred and four.
Yeah.
Who in ISD has twice the votes we do?
Who?
And then our ISD.
Oh, yeah, they have twice the votes.
But not the city, don't we?
No, but.
Well, I make a motion we give all our three hundred and thirty-eight votes to Al and Donna for the Board of Directors for Ronalds County District.
Is there any agreement with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Awesome. Sorry, I was waiting for discussion, I'm trying to talk right now. All right, discuss and take action on the request from Longstreet after now, this should have two trailers on the property located at thirteen oh seven One Thirteen Street, track twenty-seven, lot twenty-three, West End Edition.
You see, you approached us at the last meeting, right?
Yes.
And you should have pictures and information in your package as well.
This is over by the old, is it by that softball field?
No.
No, it's pretty from the housing. Yes, that's other, yes.
It's behind that.
Housing authority.
Yes, from the community, Sam.
Community work at the housing authority. There you go.
Yes, it's behind your lane.
It's behind your lane. This one trailer that you see in the top right hand is what they want to use for storage and they want to bring another one in. What we think the intent is to bring a similar type of trailer house there and then join the two. And make two houses, make one house out of two.
There hasn't been somebody living in this trailer.
Yes, ma'am. And they would, I think they want to use storage and then bring in another one. They say storage, I think eventually the plan is to get, get it there and then move it to that.
So, is this little building right there, is that our house?
It's her house, yes.
It's her house.
Oh, that's her house, and so then she has this trailer that somebody else lives in.
I think she said her grandson.
Grandson.
Yeah.
Grandson and girlfriend, they.
They, they were both.
Okay.
Is that wrong sense of it?
That's what I was asking. Any police activity orders, President?
I already had two fixtures on the property.
That house in this trailer.
I see, there's just a piece two. I say about two weeks ago when I was working for the master. That, that was with, besides the residency from the grandson. Then I can remember.
My recommendation to council would be to not, to not approve this. I think you're opening pendler's box. If it's a new structure or something like that, or they're going to take these other structures down, it's a whole different ballad. But they're looking to bring in something of similar size, presumably similar year, make model.
Well, they're going to have to move a tree if they put them together. They'll have to move a post. They can't go too far to the right because over here is a, uh.
Storm shelter.
Storm shelter, thank you, yes. So, I don't know where they, unless they put it. Good question. How they would come, cut the tree?
They cut the tree down.
Yeah, there's two, I think. You know, one here and one at the back.
You cut the tree down pretty easy, you have a.
And then there would probably be just enough room for one to sit in there between that trailer and the storm shelter.
I think they're going to go over all of the houses.
Okay. But what she said was she wanted to move this trailer down to her house, so she could use it for storage.
Okay. I thought she just wanted to disconnect from the deal where it is, use it for storage and then put the other trailer.
Now, I understood her to say she was going to move this one down to use for storage and put another one in there, and I'm thinking, how are you going to move it?
I don't know, there's no makeup move.
Yeah, that's right, mm-hmm. Now, maybe I misunderstood what she had to say.
Well, it was like I asked her, I think she's here, my concern was what model are you talking? If you're talking the same, well, she didn't know, because she said the kids are doing it, but if you have the same model or older or in that range, then, you know, we get into some of that. Or we had some people come in and say, hey, we're moving a trailer, and we automatically think they're moving a new one, and they don't. They're moving an older repo.
She couldn't tell us that.
No, she couldn't, because she didn't know.
I do remember that, I could talk to anything about the new one. I'm in agreement, I don't think that, all these buildings need to be on that one lot.
Well, that's a small lot.
Well, she, this, this addition is more of a, it's not planned, but she does have two tracks.
She has two lots.
Yeah.
It's a two lot.
Oh, yeah.
Those are two lots in that place right there that we're looking at?
Well, it's two tracks.
Two tracks.
It's not, it's not actually lots, per se, because like I said, it's never been planned.
So, how does that impact having two?
Well, normally, you can't have two houses on one lot.
Well, you can track though, there's two tracks.
Yeah.
Tracks on a lot.
I, I don't know how that's defined.
Yeah. I just want to make sure we don't get in trouble by saying, no, you can't have two, which is cool.
But you're against two.
She has two structures already on two tracks anyway. I don't, I think, I'm, we're not going to get in trouble there, and I don't, it's not going to be a modular home.
Is that going to fall apart?
Yeah.
It's.
So, she wants to replace, but she didn't want to get rid of it, she just wants to move it down for storage and get one that's better.
Yeah, I just don't think it's going to make the move. I mean, it's not like you're going to put. I mean, it's not like you're gonna put the kids underneath it and jack it up and you're gonna have to. Even if you move it forty feet, I don't know if it, it's, it's gotta be thirty or forty years old.
It's pretty old.
I mean, she can work them off and do replaces, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She just can't add to it.
And see, she wanted to move this down for storage because her house is so small, oh my gosh. What all does she have that she needs to store in? In a, in a house that big?
I, I don't know how deep that property goes, when, when I drove by there, my thought was just when, you look at the top right hand, I think she's gonna put a trailer house just to the left of that. And tree and pole and everything else also, but that stuff can be moved a whole lot cheaper. You can cut a tree down and kill it, you can move a pole, that's a thousand bucks. That's still a lot cheaper than building a house. And without seeing pictures of what she's gonna move, I'm very hesitant about moving something in here. I have a lot of reservations about that. And I've got, I've got a, a sample model ordinance that I'm working on that I'll, that we'll probably bring out after the first of the year. For us to.
If she's gonna replace it, we'd be hard pressed to say no to that.
If she were to take that out and replace it, that would be, yeah. And she says she wants to use it for storage, so it's not gonna be a residence. But I just wonder where she's gonna put something. I mean, that's not what.
But if we reject it, then all she can do is replace it, she can't do anything else. She can take that one off and another one, right? Because what we're rejecting is having three livable structures on the same lot.
Even if she says it's for storage only, it's still livable.
Three livable structures.
Yeah, cause the next, the next tenants not, may not view it that way.
Right.
Maybe from three rent properties.
Well, that's what the, that's what the whole code was meant to prevent, was having multiple livable structures in one lot. I mean, it's, it is like a company, go, we're putting four mobile homes on a lot, three of them are storage, one of them, again, the one that people do that. Has an RV park, that's where you own it.
Yes.
Got a ordinance for that.
That's what got me like the trouble.
Well, they didn't care.
No, well, they.
They're not keeping them.
They were.
Now they're shutting door.
I make a motion we deny the request for the additional trailer.
But it is okay if she wants to replace it, that's what we're saying, because of all of it as well. Second.
Second, yeah.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Right. Alright, consider approval of building permits.
Next, you have two.
What?
I thought you were gonna bring it before we did.
No, uh, it's three fourteen North Fourteenth Street, uh, their mobile home is eight hundred dollars.
I think that's a little travel park.
Yeah, if it's the place I'm thinking about, three fourteen North.
They've got, they've got a trailer there, two travel trailers, that's the one where, and that old.
Oh, okay, okay, they're building that thing, right?
Yeah.
They're what?
They're working on that, that mobile home.
To do what with it?
For that, you have to live in it. Right now, there's an older gentleman living in the trailer until he finishes the, uh, or in the RV until he finishes the actual trailer house.
Does not that lady, um, whatever.
I think she sold it.
Did she sell that house? It's still a mess.
Yeah.
So, why do they burn out the, one of the burnt half the house and the trailer house right there?
He had the trailer, trailer, yes, yes. Uh, I can't think of where it was.
She sold it.
Carol, Carol, uh.
I don't know, huh?
That's the end there.
Well, it says twenty-three hundred to evaluate the total project, right?
Have you seen the trailer?
I'm just saying, it says twenty-three hundred.
I know, he's gonna fix it for twenty-three hundred dollars. He's already moved the trailer in before he got.
That's not a mobile home, that is truly a travel trailer.
No, it's a mobile home.
No, there's a mobile home and two travel cars.
Mobile home, two travel trailers and a van.
It's right there behind the old, the old, uh, uh, county barn, number on Fourteenth.
Before you get to the.
You think the one on Fourteenth.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, I'm sorry.
Sarah. Yeah, the girl.
Yeah.
Well, if they won't spend money on it, then how can we say no?
About who?
Well, but how, how, but, but how can we legally say no if you wanna spend money, you're giving us something. Unless you wanted to condemn it, then that's a different action.
She didn't, they didn't, how did that trailer house get there? How that mobile home, forget the REs, how did the mobile home, the?
I don't know, one day it just, it was there.
Yes.
I didn't even know until we drove by there that day, and I didn't even know it was there.
In fact, they, they, they probably brought in the frame, and then they've been building on that camp. I'm assuming.
Cause I, surely you would've remembered a, a mobile home back in, and it come down and drop it down.
Yeah.
And that thing is so old, it's not like they had a professional drive, I mean.
Yeah, I don't think it was one day it killed it.
Yeah, one day it was there.
Yeah.
So, this is the permit, is that in there? But it's already there?
Yes, it's all been there.
Yeah, I'm caught up.
He didn't realize that you had that problem.
Yeah, I'm caught up. I thought they were making improvements to the mobile home, it's already there.
No, I think it just popped up one day.
But the, but the, this has been approved to the.
Yeah.
It's going to those parts?
Yeah.
It doesn't have to go. Oh, because it had no, it had no Fourteenth Street.
It's an R two, right? That's what.
You know what?
Hate your name.
Renee A. and Mary Cortez, want to, people, aren't you? Want to put in a twenty-three by sixteen by nine and a half foot carport.
Just in the back of the front?
It's in the front, there's a couple more on that street, and so you keep it even with those, you're good.
So, like his neighbor next door?
Yeah.
Okay.
Julianne Delos Santos, three fourteen North Fourteenth, the mobile home.
That does one way to help.
That ain't a repartment. And that's all we got.
That's those two, right?
Yes.
So, it's already there and that's all we're doing.
Make a motion we approve Cortez's building permit.
I say we approve Mary's, but not Renee's.
Yeah.
So.
Obviously.
It's not a re.
Well, I mean, or is it?
Well, it's already there, they're just redoing it.
But it wasn't, it wasn't on the property, they brought a trailer in, it's almost like they're constructing something from scratch.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it's a mobile home, I mean.
But it's R two, so, I mean.
It's a mobile home frame that they're trying to fix or rebuild or construct.
Pretty much build, they're just fixing it up.
Okay.
I think it came in that way.
Well, according to the code, how many stops do I have to do it?
From?
From R two, or in R two?
I think it's in the business, isn't it? R two, you want to.
Well, it appears, nah, I think it's in R two.
In, in R two, you can bring in a mobile home.
Right, he has, it looks like it's in B two.
That was old. Is that, is that D or R, is that your right?
Yeah, yeah, I should get it, I think, uh, the district goes up and that's on the edge of the prison.
Oh, business?
I think so.
Maybe.
I'd have to look at my.
If it's B two, then you can't have, you can't have a mobile home. So, otherwise, we'll start having one on that.
Well.
But there was one there that burned and they're just, putting this one in its place.
No, it was an RV in there, that burnt years and years ago. And finally, she cleaned, or part of it was RV or something in there. And she finally got that cleaned out.
I thought that must've been mumbled.
Well, there was an old trailer house.
Yeah, an old trailer house, and it burnt years ago, and then she finally got all of that mess cleaned out, but there is most of it. And then the guy lets a little aluminum travel trailer move in, and, you know what he's done, and then the next thing you know, the mobile home's sitting in there, and then there's another travel trailer with all this stuff piled up on it. Got a lot of stuff piled up on there. And a lot of stuff, alright.
Well, of course, you know, there's that, you can use that travel truck, uh, you know, as long as no one is living in, in all three of them.
Yeah.
It's the same thing as having three residents on one lot, or two residents on one lot. But, uh, you know, they show them there, no, long, as long as no one lives in them, or as long as only one person living in one. Uh, as far as the, uh, tri- uh, trailer house, uh, no, it's there. And as far as price wise, I imagine what he's looking at, what they're looking at is they're using all the used material, you know, all, all the material is what they're moving. And the only thing they didn't do was come get a permit to begin with.
For the reconstruction or for the?
Yeah, for reconstruction, yeah.
Or for the moving.
Moving it in or what they're willing to look at.
So, they are now coming forward after you informed of that, now they're asking for the permit?
Yeah. It's not the first time it's happened, you know, a lot of people have moved in carports, built carports, sheds, you know, storage sheds, you know, and when we send them, we check.
Do they have a timeframe that they think they're gonna be able to give it done?
Uh, from, from that point, six months.
I mean, trust me, those were satisfied, done with their remodel before they could work, I mean. Not the same, I know.
Well, I mean, the issue of the, uh, stuff piled up is a separate issue from the trailer, if you cut lockings to clean up, that's a separate issue.
Yeah. I think if the, if the stuff is clean, if the property is cleaned up, it just looks, it looks bad. It's just, I mean, I'm trying to find an eye, but I'm saying it looks like crap. But I don't know if it looks like crap because you got a trailer here, you got a trailer here, it's a working zone essentially, and you haven't have, it's like walking in the middle of surgery, you kinda got body parts hanging all over the place. You know, you hope that some.
What kind of surgery have you been in? That's loving medical surgery.
It's not the, it's not the Baylor Medical Center.
But if you don't approve it, it's already there.
What, what's the, I mean, that's the question, what's the recourse? Do we make you move it out, and get a permit to move it out?
I think just go with it and check on it in six months and then.
I mean, it's gotta be a livable structure, right? If not, we can do it.
Yeah, yeah. So, I wouldn't make six months, I think periodically when in the area, provide and check on it and just, you know, alright, just check around and make sure things are good. Keep it clean, keep it neat, keep it right. I'm, I made a note here that we'll need to address the legal moving of trailers and other structures.
There's gotta be some fines and shit.
We need to, we need to have a schedule.
We, we need to update.
I make a motion we approve the building permit, President.
Second.
Second.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Mm-hmm.
Nay. You want to nay? Alright, here's the police activity report, nothing to report from, sorry, Stan, alright.
Alright, well, fast phone, only eight arrests, thirty-seven reports, sixteen accidents, four hundred and thirty calls to the month. Tickets are staying about the same, I do believe.
Was that the citation issue?
Yes.
Seventy-four?
Yes. And, uh, mileage is about the same, the one on one oh three, it was broken down in half a month, that's why the mileage was low, and cheap is just cheap, so.
Cheap is one oh one?
Uh, one oh five.
One oh five.
One oh three, is that the oldest vehicle?
That's the oldest charger, not the oldest vehicle.
Okay, the oldest vehicle is actually the Explorer, I heard.
Yeah, one oh nine, with ninety-eight thousand.
Okay. There we go.
The, um, USDA called me today and they got a bid, they have a place, I don't know, that's not a problem, but there's about three thousand dollars on the table that, um, we need to figure out how to spend, or we're gonna lose three thousand dollars in grand monies. And those bids, do we need decals, do we need?
Yes.
Can you get with me in the morning and we can figure out how to?
That wasn't on.
Huh?
That wasn't on.
Can you get with me on Thursday?
Wednesday, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Mark was looking at new decals, I don't know if he made up his mind yet or not.
Okay.
Decal running about six, plus six hundred dollars.
Okay.
And I go, and I can add something onto the cost.
Well, I figured you could.
Yeah, so, if you're alive, something.
Well, there was something where you actually, we took stuff off of it, trying to reduce the cost, but I guess now we need to put it back.
Yeah, the way, it's, the USDA is kind of a, it's a quinkydink anyway. Which is a very technical term. Uh, but Todd Powell called and said, we're gonna lose three thousand, thirty-five hundred, somewhere in there.
Well, we can put in there a lot more for the town, so, that'll run about two grand.
That and decals, or we're on?
Yeah. I'll get you across in a moment.
Please do.
Love it.
The other thing is, um, we may have the option to buy a used Tahoe from the city of Merson, where Ethan Farmer was the chief of police. Uh, the city of Miles has the first rights at it, if they refuse to buy it, um, we may be interested in buying it, how much is that?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand, has nineteen hundred miles on it?
Nineteen hundred, twenty-fourteen, has nineteen hundred miles on it.
Fully loaded, decked out, just take that crappy city of Merson sign off of and put city of Bowser on there.
Yeah, it's locked.
That's bad.
It could be, it could be another cover one, everybody relax, they say city of Merson, we still give them a ticket. Oh, it's city of Merson.
I do not work for the voters of the city of Merson, I work for the loading, understandable and grateful. And I am grateful for the citizens of Bowser for which I have pled my own dedication, I love.
Yeah, we, we align them, we're following the Mersons, the school district follows up, you created an issue. That's all I'm saying.
Merson got that many students. Merson got that many students that fast? There gonna be a problem. All right, any other questions concerned for sergeant? Thank you, sir. All right, here's the city administrators, bye, we have to report please. I want to just talk to, tell you what a pleasure it is to work for the city of Bounder, not the city of Merson. Um, you got your financial statements in front of you. Uh, this is month two of the fiscal year. So far, we're, we're on par. You guys have any questions on the financial statements, any questions whatsoever asked? And I'll try to answer them to the best of my ability. While you're going through that, I have, and I had it in here somewhere. And, it did not make it. I have a, I did a water rate study to go and see how our water rates are doing compared, uh, from last year to this year. Give me one second, I'm gonna check where there are. You have to think of all kinds of wonderful questions, Steve Chubbson, Paul Chaney. You're a gentleman, keep him occupied for about thirty seconds. He asked for a second, I went for it.
It must be a telly.
Jolene, Jolene, raise your hand. I thought that's who you're doing.
You sure that's all you need thirty seconds to do?
My help, my help, no, yeah, go ahead, Stan.
Oh, my goodness.
My help, my help.
Well, watch her head, so she doesn't fall.
Gotta be deep for long, you know? That's when you have to report that, what happened? They were kind of bored of you, you know, being.
You got a little violent.
Yeah. Aimed for the constituent mist. Hey, Brian, when he gets back, he's too slow.
People have told me talk then, that way you can watch this. Forget we did talk. I give you Chinese all the time. Be ready when you walk in.
I apologize for the delay. I trust that Stan can do it.
Old city councilor, they can get tased.
Did you want?
Yeah, you get tased.
Are you tased? Don't tase me, bro.
We want the demonstration.
I asked Randy to start referring some numbers for water. I'm curious to see if the new water rates, uh, were working. And we'll get to that here in a second. There were a couple of numbers in there that I found really interesting. From October one to thirteenth to September thirtieth of fourteen, we, uh, treated a hundred and forty six in the, two hundred and, six hundred and forty seven thousand gallons of water left in the plane. The top line is Bounder use only, our customers. And then it's Rowena and North Reynolds. So if you add all that up, that's all we're producing, but, we dropped six million gallons in, um, one year. So our consumption went down. We went from about four hundred thousand gallons a day on average to about three hundred eighty five thousand gallons a day on average. Water, Rowena actually used a little bit more, I guess, there's a few people out there. And then the North Reynolds, that number is accurate, six hundred and fifty nine thousand gallons.
They dropped big time, didn't they?
Yes, yes, they did. They dropped because I think winners just cut them a better deal. Their rates are significantly less. We used four hundred and one thousand seven one seven in that first column. We used three eighty five, three eighty four, eight thirty five, I won't say three hundred eighty five, but, in the second column. That's per day, so we dropped fifteen thousand gallons per day. You would, you, you're gonna see that because the water rates went up. If you notice the total rainfall, we got, we actually got more rainfall from October to September of fourteen, fifteen, you know, about almost ten inches. The red is what really, you look at these numbers and you go, man, we're in great shape, but then you see what's like Bounder guy. There was a difference of about three feet, three point eight feet, uh, between thirteen and fourteen. But look between fourteen and fifteen. And I asked him, is that accurate? He said, is, right now Lake Bounder is too low to read. We are too low to read.
Now, this is just the new look?
Yes. We do not factor in the old look. If you look at our water sales, despite selling six million gallons less, we made, um, we sold another, an additional four hundred thousand. And that's kind of keeping us afloat. No pun intended.
Well, theoretically, we sold well less than six million. We're so close to nine million, well, eight million. Probably, North Reynolds went from three to six fifty nine.
Yeah, I'm just looking at water, yeah. Unfortunately, I think the water rates is, is less.
It's not, it's not getting their lake full.
Water rates have nothing to do with the lake getting full. But I wanted you guys to see these numbers. We had a visitor today, the internet guys. Our internet here, to be blunt, is woefully inadequate and lacking. It takes Cory roughly nine to ten hours to upload the city council meeting.
And it kicks everybody gas off.
Yes.
While you're doing it, and doesn't have enough speed, well, speed of broadband.
Variety.
Well, that's probably what's going on.
Yeah. So we are in need of a, they sold?
Yeah.
Yeah, they were sold.
Everybody's got, company at California Frontier.
Right here.
Frontier, that's what I heard.
That's reason they have to make the investment value, that's the reason.
Yeah, not until they take Mirage, folks, yes.
Well, we are not, we're in need of an internet provider. And we had a company today.
VGI.
VGI came in, uh, they can go ten meg, down and four up. And it's two hundred dollars a month. Now, we're paying fifty nine dollars a month for us.
It was not that much for, uh, that, for Rise. You know, took them to Rise, I don't know if they charge every vendor for.
I don't know, it's like everybody in town has a different opinion on all of it.
I'm talking about products, I'm just talking about your products.
Yeah.
You can get twenty for not two hundred bucks.
Twenty, twenty residential, and I don't know if they, they distinguish from the residential commercial. Twenty from Rise is, I wanna say ninety nine or a hundred and ninety a month. So it would be, it would be cheaper. But that's, that's residential, I didn't, we didn't look into our commercial. This is a roundabout way of telling you guys, we're probably going to be switching internet providers. And it's a budget item, so I don't necessarily need council approval to do that if y'all, unless you want me specifically to bring this back up for.
I think you have to just keep it with Rise and approach yourself. Cause I risk myself for my house and for us.
I think, I think, Rise is, yeah. Rise is one generation better than smoke signals.
Well, you know, there was a time when Verizon was the best.
Yeah.
You know, and then. We live in Bounder.
We will look into Rise, um, but I just wanted to bring this up.
I would just pit them against each other, it's what happens.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, we use it all. From another wrong rise.
Well, well, yeah, we're, we're, we're.
You have a dish? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we have TV.
Yeah.
Your latency issues was set on?
Christmas schedule, oh, um, we're going to have, uh, in lieu of doing turkeys and hands this year, I made the executive decision, uh, with Bonilla's permission. And because Bonilla is my organization, so you have no idea. We're having a Christmas party, Monday, December the seventeenth at six thirty PM. You and your spouses and kiddos are welcome to come. We would love to be able to be there. So Thursday night, so I don't think there's anything going on that night. We got some due from Rowena and Kater.
Okay, the seventeenth at what time?
Seventeenth at six thirty.
It comes with a thing.
Can you have you soon?
At the two E, sir, yes, ma'am.
We from this Thursday.
We will have Christmas carols and Bonilla will be doing karaoke.
Well, please tell me Brian.
Bonilla has discovered that she likes opera and Mirage very.
It's up there, six thirty.
Seventeenth at six thirty.
That's crazy.
Yeah.
We from this Thursday.
We will be closed on the twenty fourth and the twenty fifth, uh, for Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. And that's it. Right now the dinner is supposed to be, uh, steak, prospects, potato, green beans and these throws. Yes.
Uh, Steve was asking about a credit card machine at airport, Pay Pal account.
Yes.
And, we found out it's fifteen bucks for the little slider for phone. And the account, they just take out like two percent of each transaction for square. Uh, I looked at Pay Pal, I talked to Tammy about Square, it's basically the same thing.
How would that, you talked about at the airport, right? Are we gonna have just a pay station there?
No, he would still have to be there.
Oh, you're talking about for fuel?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was gonna ask, is this for fuel?
I thought this was for water, I was like, that was a great idea.
Well, obviously, if someone was there, they could do water too.
We've, we've got the camera out there now for the water.
Steve? We, we did put a camera up with license plates so we can monitor who's coming in and getting water. There's no accurate way to pick, but we can have a pretty good idea. Who's, who's?
So we're doing like a logbook, like, like we did down in the park?
Yeah.
So that's, that's easy enough to tell if people are cheating, because, you know, in the next century, it's just a different, we either get it.
But, um, yeah, at the airport, we probably need to get a credit card reader of some sort for technical, not typical, whatever.
And with me, I don't know what type of phones he has.
I don't know. Now, you can use an iPhone or Android.
Oh, yeah. Just PayPal, just put some.
Uh, PayPal you can use either, or Tammy says Square, you can only use iPhone. I don't know what Anthony had.
Does Joe have an iPhone?
Yeah, Android.
Yeah. Does Joe have an iPhone?
Android.
Then he can use Square, because God knows, he's charged me for barbecuing on that thing.
Well, well, but they had that hooked up to my pad.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can use the Square for iPhone.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
They had it hooked up to my pad.
We'll look at a PayPal account for the airport for fuel cells. It'd be a great way to track it, if we can figure out how to put a pay station there for water, that'd be the best.
When Republic came and took the dumpsters away, how did they figure for, was it three houses per dumpster, four houses per dumpster?
Four, four, four for three yard.
But there seems to be a problem.
Do we have to deal with value?
Jason did not empty it last week. Or this, yeah, last week. It's not been empty, so now it overflows and, because there's three of us using one and it's overflowing. And it's sitting on my side. So I just wondered, if he forgets to dump it then. There's one up front for two houses. And I don't know if he, they consider me the third house on that block to use that one. Or use the one at the side and there're only be two people using that. And I got asked about why all of the dumpsters left the neighborhood.
Well, I got questioned about that too, especially over my own large end. And they said, well, where they moved the dumpster, had some handicapped people and they were having more difficulty getting their trash out now, because where they moved it, it was not communitizing.
I got, to that point, I got an email. Uh, I got a phone call last week from Peggy Feibach about dumpsters. And, um, we had a very interesting conversation. She asked for the Republic contract, I emailed for the contract. And this morning, uh, I got an email back from her, uh, apologizing and thanking the city for, um, you know, she just, because I didn't realize the contract stated this and I'm sorry. And she's just, said she'll have to deal with it. So, it's a mixed bag. It is, I think, to this point, I think Bounder was extremely spoiled for a number of years.
Well, the flip side, the only other way to do it is the container, those, those individual containers, if you want, next one you get. And you pay for it, personally. But the problem is, is if you want another one on your block, then everybody has to pay.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we can't even do that because we can't.
Yeah.
Fill it that way.
We do know that, um, and this is something I wanted to get with Stan and Mark and, and we can talk about this later. There are, there is illegal dumping going on. Bobo, you know, he caught some people illegally dumping in his dumpster about a park, uh, Sunday morning. And he was just very adamant about it, telling me this morning that, uh, people are coming in from crews and truck full of some of this trash and they're just putting it in random places.
Three years, yes, they do the football field, school, the school, and around, if like my neighborhood, somebody came through and I thought, oh, where do you belong? Not here.
That's one of our earlier conversations, if he just takes one, I'm, I'm quit.
Where's your body camera?
If it's a little, it's all in your hands.
I just don't wanna be on the end, they look.
Fry all in here, I'll be the one's head.
Just make sure that those trash before you take them. You're picking it up.
But I think, I think that's one of the things that we probably will look and crack down on, because we do have people. I mean, those people on crews, I just, bunch of heathens out there.
And honestly, I don't think that ever seen a lawsuit where somebody ever filed it.
For illegal dumping?
For illegal dumping.
Yeah.
So.
But people have to report it before they do anything.
Yeah, I, I know, I'm not saying it's you guys, I'm just saying, I'm gonna try to make a concerted effort to tell people, if you see people illegally dumping, if they don't live in town, if they're, if they got a trailer. If they got a trailer full of trash, odds are...
They're not from here.
They're probably...
Well, if you got a vehicle parked next to a dumpster, odds are...
Yeah.
Well, but it's normally in town, they're dumping it out by one mile and other places, too, so...
Yeah, yeah, one mile.
Oh, they're, they're not part of my area.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna give us the ledger tomorrow to go over a couple of things on...
Do we get fines associated with it?
Illegal dumping?
Mm-hmm.
I'm pretty sure it's at least a class C.
Yeah.
Well, you can't do dumpster dumping either, that's illegal.
Well, who don't fall apart though?
I wanna go with the ledger tomorrow and talk about dumping, and talk, you know, with, with, with the reduced amount of, of dumpsters in town, you know, you need to be more cognizant of people coming in and taking advantage of that. If you live in town, if you, if you're dumped for school, you can take any, your red house holder, those inch of trash, and the side of the center, don't take yet. The fees that the council passed back in October, one, well, based on current, one for the brush truck, and the other for the, um, volunteer fee for the cemetery association. The brush truck had a component on that of sixty-five and older. Logistically, this is how this is going to work, because there's just no, there's just no other way, it's going to go on everybody's bill in January. And then, if you're sixty-five and older, you bring in proof, you know, you're sixty-five and older, driver's license work, we will take it off of one account. If you have fifteen or eight houses, it's gonna go on fourteen of them, and...
That one house you live in.
Yes. Yeah, but I'm just letting you guys know, logistically, that's how it's gonna work, it's gonna show up on the people's bill, um, and that's another thing we're talking to the ledger about. You may get phone calls, what is this, I don't understand, if you're sixty-five and older, come in, we'll take it off. I already told the girls, I'll take them to Milwaukee, cause they're gonna get a lot of phone calls. The one dollar fee, um, I don't think we'll have too many issues with that as well.
Not once they understand it's voluntary.
It's voluntary, yes.
Jamie, why you gonna be asking that?
And so, that is my exacerbated and law report. Any questions, comments, concerns, or issues? Okay.
Alright, moving along, here request for future attendance from city council.
Where do we stay with the building, Chris?
The lodge owner? I'll have something for you guys in Ja, in January, or I can...
Well, it's not rush, we're just curious, and maybe we can handle the fines for...
Dumping it, well?
Not with the illegal, putting, leaving mobile homes in or something.
Yeah.
That one, but we can wrap up that whole thing once.
I have a, I have a note here, I guess, on that issue, it's gonna be a work in progress. Do you want the first draft to be very lenient, do we make it stronger, or do you want me to put absolutely, as strong as I can as possible, we made it, Marley? If it don't look warm, it's gonna get, we're gonna, we're gonna be in the middle of this, it's gonna be dilute.
I think it's looking at other people are doing, right?
Most people are, are putting teeth, significant teeth behind it.
So, it's for strong, and then weaken water, you know, if we want.
Yes.
Or modify it the way we think it fits us.
It, it's also geographical, too, Snyder is somewhat open to it, North Texas is absolutely opposed to it.
But like, they're living in different ways.
Yes, I agree. I agree. So... But if, if January's okay with you?
That's true. I'm sure I'll get asked.
No, sir, you won't get asked, you're, you're, they will not approach you in that manner, so...
Alright, we did move along. Alright, Boundary City Council's meeting in executive session is authorized by Central Government Code Section five five point nine zero seven one. Consultation with the city attorney, we're updated for alternative water resources. Thank you all that much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Jess.
Yep. Good evening.
Thank you, Stan.
No problem.
See y'all later.
Here, please. Can we go to the executive station for update on...